Good evening.
Good evening.
Huh? It's up, man.
I T, am I good?
He run a.
All right, so good evening, everybody.
We're the Liberal County Board of Commissioners, um, regular.
First Tuesday meeting. Good to see everyone. Happy June to you and all those things that go with it, summer. Um, Mr. Brown has a medium properly advertised.
Yes, right.
I saw, yeah, I just see him. All right. Uh, we're happy to have with us today, uh, Bishop Bet. Will you please come and lead us in our invocation, our pledge? Will you please stand to receive the invocation and pledge?
To our chairman and to all of our commissioners, uh, I want to start by suggesting that, uh, one of your county, one of your commissioners had really asked if, uh, Commissioner Stevens would lead us in a hymn before we get started on today. He told me to say that, so I wanted to make sure that I.
Hey, that, that, that.
We have a talk after?
Come back, we'll have a talk.
No, no, I mean, that sounds good, but look at the time.
Look at the time, all right. Let us pray. Father, we're so blessed and thankful on this evening for the opportunity that we have to come together as members of our county. We pray your blessings upon each one of our commissioners and our commission as a whole, that you will look upon us and bless our county continually. We thank you for all things and we give you praise now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gilbert, how did we do? How did we do on that one?
You did good.
Okay, thank you.
A few months ago, I think March is Women's History Month. I think it's kind of start the conversation was in a meeting and we talked about, uh, some, um, trailblazers in our community. And, uh, the name of Hazel Ricardo came up and of course I served with Melissa on the Liberal County Development Authority Board who were talking about her grandmother and she said, I think I have a copy of article. So she went in her archives and she, or she borrowed it from someone and she, and she brought it to us and we read it and we were thinking, we were trying to give her all of her proper attributes for the contribution she made to, to Liberty County and there were more than really I, I knew about, so we were very pleased to find that out and we thought, well, you know, we can certainly wait until March of next year for Women's History Month, oh, we can do something fairly quickly. So we arranged with Melissa, cause she had to go away for a little bit and she backed away, let's do something. So the staff here is very kind to, uh, find a nice way to commemorate the work of this Hazel Carter, uh, who served here. And, uh, we're honored today to have been our audience members of the Carter family. It's very rare that you, um, you know, Liberal County is a place known for many firsts. She was the first female county commissioner, am I right? Yeah. And some other positions. So we have something we want to present to the family, to the community that, uh, to commemorate her work, but something that will always hang on the walls of, uh, in this building, this annex building to, to educate and remind others of her contribution and to, and to encourage little girls coming along that they can do great things too. So we're proud today to do this. Mr. Brown. Yeah. Commissioners, can we come down in front of the staff? Of course, I think we all know that Don was up here too, so. A lot of contributions on this staff. Once we get Melissa kind of to get these all of the boards and we hold shots a little bit and frame that we're gonna hang it at our office. This is office they can see. We're about to work. You got, got this spokesperson?
I'm right here. Somebody from the.
I'm gonna let y'all. Can I get you, can I get y'all to back up some?
Yes, I'm gonna try to get everything out of the picture except y'all.
We, we tighten that up a little bit there.
First woman elected to the county committee seat in the state of Georgia. State of Georgia.
they made the, uh, state citizens, um, uh, some, and that was, and was real honored with that. And, um, she was our good actress, active, uh, compared to my country, that, and, and she started with lots of things, uh, like there might, might be another first, recognized as someone thirty-five years after she went off there. So, she's just a slayer, a family, and, and, and thank y'all, appreciate you.
And that's who we give the print of this proverb to, which says, call their name and they will live forever. Call her name, they can't be caught, and she will live forever.
to let us know that on June twenty-first from six to seven, hurricane season, uh, briefing will be done, uh, at the complex and on the twenty-seventh of June, six to seven, one will be done at the Raspberry Youth Center. So the twenty-first at the complex and the twenty-seventh at the Raspberry Youth Center so we can prepare ourselves for this hurricane season.
Thank you.
Uh, minutes from the month of May need to be approved. Had time to look at those. Chair entertain the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Do we approve the minutes?
Second. Motion second, approve the minutes from the month of May and further discussion. All in favor, by show of hands, please. All right. It's approved. I lose my county administrator. All right, public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four budget. Chair entertain motion to go into public hearing.
Tom move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Mr. Matt.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to present.
Commissioner Jones is tied up at work. He's asked me to express his regrets for not being able to be here, but he's, he's tied up at work.
I'm here to present the FY twenty-four proposed budget for the county. Um, a summary of the budget is also posted online on our website. Um, it's been a process. Department heads have sent in their list of wants and requests, um, and we've gone through them in detail trying to prioritize them. Um, I've summarized in basically thirteen slides so you can see the budget request, um, the overall change from our current fiscal year and what we are proposing for next fiscal year. The original budget request came in this year at sixty-five million. Um, we've made cuts through our workshops and other efforts, um, of seven point one million, bringing us to the proposed budget for FY twenty-four of fifty-eight million. For a comparative review, um, our current budget in FY twenty-three is forty-nine point five million and some change, and we are proposing a sixteen point nine increase to bring it up to the fifty-eight million. This slide shows our summary of general fund revenues broken down by category and object code, um, based on the uniform chart of accounts, um, as they classify them. As you can see, your general, general property taxes are, uh, the largest revenue line item. This is proposed to go up twenty-two percent. Um, although we don't know what the digest is gonna do at this point, um, this is the amount that was needed to balance the budget and cover the expenditures. To give you a picture of our largest revenues and to try to emphasize the, uh, the importance of the property taxes, which covers, um, all of your taxes such as property tax, personal property tax, motor vehicle tax, um, TAVT, intangible recordings and real estate taxes. So all of those that the millage rate touches, um, is considered your general property taxes. Uh, in this year's budget, it makes up approximately sixty-three percent of our total revenues. The four largest revenue sources for the general fund are, uh, again, property taxes, followed by charges for services, uh, which includes things such as ambulance fees, uh, prisoner housing fees, and then recreation, uh, revenue that's generated from summer camps and sports, um, pavilion rentals, and just to name a few. Coming in third is our general sales and use tax, which is our lost, our local option sales tax. And then finally fines and forfeitures, which primarily, uh, collected by our courts. This is the breakdown of the expenditures, um, by category and the county provides services to its citizens and these services are carried out by the county's employees. Um, salaries and benefits are always going to be your largest expenditure. Um, your human capital is your most valuable asset, so you would expect to, um, see this continue, it to trend this way. Um, this year, we are proposing a sixteen percent increase in total salary and wages. The largest reason for this, um, is due to, well, portion of it is due to some of the positions that were new positions created in FY twenty-three's budget. Um, many of those related to public safety, uh, positions and those were only funded half a year. So in twenty twenty-four, the budget's gonna see a whole year's worth of those salary, um, increase. Also, um, there were raises, uh, merit raises, COLA and longevity bonuses that were given to employees in FY twenty-three, which is gonna carry forward, um, year after year. Another significant increase, um, is purchase services. This category includes our property and casualty insurance for the year, um, upcoming expenditures for the new, um, fire station and EMS facility that are set to open soon. Um, our IT department is installing a new phone system. Um, and then the overall, the remaining portion of the increase is just overall cost increase, um, for purchases, services purchased throughout the, the county. Um, if you take the same budget and break it down by function, public safety makes up about forty-two percent of the total budget. Um, that's pretty significant. Um, this includes your sheriff, jail, EMS, fire and the corner. Um, having public safety represent the largest piece of the pie, so to speak, demonstrates the great effort and dedication that you all have made to ensure the safety of its citizens. I've also included the FY twenty-three, um, percentages in the prior year column to see how they compare to last year. Overall, all of the segments are pretty, um, consistent. Um, the negative. The negative percentage shown in the prior year column for other financing uses is actually due to having budgeted to use some of fund balance last year to balance the budget. So that's why that shows as a, as a negative. This slide shows the classification of services. The mandated services make up 50% of the budget. Essential coming in at 49% and discretionary services about 1%. The mandatory services are the only ones you are required by law to provide to the taxpayers. And here is a classification for what makes up each. One thing to point out is the fire and EMS are not mandated. But you all have made a commitment to bringing these services into the county for its citizens. Each of these operations are pretty significant in and of themselves. And then discretionary services are very little in comparison. They're only $500,000 of the 58 million. The FY24 budget includes some proposed new personnel totaling 1.4 million with about 1.2 million of this being for public safety. With the new fire station and EMS facility, they're both expected to open soon. This is a much needed expense. The remaining portion of this is for the salary study implementation along with the merit and longevity for the county's employees totaling another 2.1 million. So a combined additional personnel and benefits of 3.5. Another thing to note is that we didn't include any capital items in the proposed budget. We were able to find additional funding sources through ARPA, Sales Tax 6, Sales Tax 7 for many of the urgent and necessary items that were in the CIP for FY24. Additionally, we found some savings in the current year's budget to fund some of those other requests. And then the county will address any emergency needs for capital as they arise throughout the year and fund those out of general fund. Challenges for FY24. Continue to fulfill our obligation for both the county-wide fire and EMS services. The implementation of the 2022 salary study. The increased financial burden for property and casualty insurance. This one took us a little by surprise and increased a total of 1.5 million over last year. And then continue to monitor, monitor the use of ARPA funding. This one is just to ensure that we're, we're using those funds for approved projects, ARPA approved projects and within the deadline, which is 2026. Considerations for budget adoption. As always, continue to monitor our general fund revenues as well as expenditures to make sure we're adhering to the county's budget policy. Continue to pursue cost reduction initiatives and find savings where at all possible. Some of these include eliminating overtime unless it's absolutely necessary. Continue to monitor our service contracts to ensure we're getting the best price for the services we're getting. Continue to pursue cost savings through purchasing, bulk purchasing of supplies and materials where it's advantageous. We also want to make sure we're adhering to the county's fund balance policy. This one's sure we maintain a fiscally responsible level of fund balance while also identifying specific uses of our reserves. And lastly, further revisions may be needed once the digest is available. I believe the notices were just mailed out a few days ago. So this information should be forthcoming hopefully soon. And then there's a couple of items that have come to light that will possibly change this proposed budget. And those include a decrease for some of the requested fire station personnel. Due to their vacancies, they're not requesting as many to start right away in July and will instead start in January. So that will save us approximately 200,000. Another item that's kind of come to light is we possibly have an additional funding source for ADP for FY24. So that'll save us another 250,000. And then we recently got notice of some salary COLA increases from ACCG. So those will decrease in the other direction, but we're estimating approximately 390, 400,000 decrease to these numbers. So at least it's going in the right direction. And that's all I have for you. Unless you have any questions.
Can you talk about the possible funding for ADP? Is that something you can openly discuss?
Sure. So yes, we were, I was discussing with Joey and that's an ARPA approved expense to get us to the paperless kind of environment. It funded us for the FY23 year and there is available funds if we, you know, take some out of our admin line item and shift it. So that'll definitely help the general fund.
There was a little magic left in the hat.
Need some more, actually.
Commissioners, any questions before to the audience about the presentation?
I just had one add on to what Ms. Richardson was saying as far as the budget increase was like 17%. But and then you explained the issues of 2024 with those four bullets that you had on the other slide.
Do you mind saying those again, just to make sure everybody's, do include a large few voices here in?
For the challenges?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, the, yeah. On here you have the issues.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
The issues with the insurance and salary study.
Absolutely.
That we implement, okay.
There is a definite increase in our FY24 budget due to a variety of reasons specifically for the continued efforts made to stand up the county fire and EMS facilities. We have a Miller Park Fire Station is opening pretty soon and we obviously have to staff that. Same with the EMS. Their building's set to open pretty soon as well. The county had a 2022 salary study done and we just got those results in the last, you know, few months or so. And the board has decided to recommend that for the budget. And so that's, that's another very large expense. The property and casualty insurance, this one just, it increased probably nationwide, but the county felt a real, a real big hit this year. So that alone increased 1.5 million over last year. And those are the primary reasons of our increase, yes.
Right. So overall, we got like 17% increase, but do you know how much just those four were? Was it like 14% of the 17?
Like five.
Give or take. It was quite a bit. And I want the citizens of Liberty County to know that they are, they were definitely, we kind of blindsided in one way.
Absolutely.
That the increase in property and casualty insurance has increased tremendously.
Yes, ma'am.
And also the salary study that we did for our employees to get them up to where they need to be. So hopefully that we could retain those employees with the job market that we currently have in this area, that we'd be able to keep those folks.
Absolutely.
So I want our citizens to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I believe those couple items alone are 5 million of the, of the total increase.
Increase of 8 million.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That's what I was trying to get at. All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Out of that, salary study implementation, about what percent would that be for the employees? Would it be like a 2%, 3%? How does that?
I'm actually not sure. It depends on the, does it vary?
It will, it will vary based on the market analysis that the group did by job position. So it's not any across the board. I'd hate to guess at an average.
Okay.
Because it's up and down.
Okay. And this will go into effect?
Sorry. Projected by the board right now in the budget to go into effect July 1st.
Okay, all right. And I agree with what Commissioner Thresh said. This should make our employees feel happy and we can maintain them.
I agree.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask, we, earlier on when we were looking at the budget, we talked about trying to increase this fund balance. What, what figure are we looking at right now? How many months?
For the current month, well, we just finished April, which I'll present on next week. We're still around seven months of fund balance.
Okay, and then the other thing is, Joey, I guess I could ask you, attrition, anybody that's going to be leaving that you can think of in any of the departments?
No, sir, not that I can think of.
I mean, we're, we're good in that way.
Yes, sir, under us.
Okay, and I'm glad you hit on a key point. This is the first reading of it and we still haven't got the digest yet. So things that could, could change considerably.
I reached out to Glenda today.
Do what now?
I reached out to Glenda today to, to see when we could get a preliminary.
Okay, so we're good with possibly no, no, through attrition, nobody leaving unless it's somebody that just comes in and decides they want to leave. And we've got fund balances in good shape.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Our issue has been trying to attract personnel.
Yes.
911 comes to mind. And some public safety positions too, but I think I hear that they're back on wood.
Yep.
Pretty stable right now, so.
CDL drivers, you know, road department sanitation, a lot of those were tough.
We have what, what we budgeted then for the road department's expansion, that's still going to be in there. But I'm wondering, we talked about it three years ago and I know concrete has increased and asphalt has increased if you can get somebody to, to do either one of them. So those are challenges that's going to be out there for all of us. But anyhow, you did a real good job, Samantha.
Thank you.
I'm glad that we did get the first reading of it. It's still, still pretty high.
Yes.
I'm sure people on the TV can't holler at me, but we're, I've got friends in this room that I know that will. But let's try our best. But the citizens, especially our employees, you know, we need to try to, to do what we can for those. That's all about, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, I'd like to say that I wasn't able to make any of the budget hearings this year. I want to apologize to the ones that worked so hard on this. But I did get some information from Joey yesterday when I got back from out of town. And I appreciate that, Joey. I'm, I was just looking at what Joey sent me the, you know, we had a lot of personnel requests that was, that was not approved. And, you know, so that was some hard work and some heavy lifting there, you know, to make that decision. And then we got a, he sent me another spreadsheet with the ones that, that's the recommendations that we deem necessary. And I fully understand that. I, I saw on the news this morning as I was on my way to work, somewhere in Liberty County, I don't know if it was Heinzville or the Liberty County Fire Department, but was there a graduation or something yesterday? Was that, was that Heinzville or Liberty County?
Last night.
So are those guys already on board?
Some of those started working today, yes, sir.
Okay. So that's this number of proposed recommendation, let's say for the Miller Park Station of 14, was that some of those guys?
Probably some of those guys. They'll fill vacancies that are already there.
Okay.
That we're consistently trying to fill. As the chairman mentioned, that, you know, public safety around the coastal empire are pretty, pretty tough to keep all those jobs fully filled. But yes, sir, those will, those are already hired?
Already, already working. Okay, that's good. And, and I guess, you know, when, when you look at, you know, we've, we've been blessed in this county to have Splotch and T-Splotch and, you know, we've got some, some ARPA funds and, you know, some departments get grants. And I know that this is the first reading and, you know, we'll get together like we do every year and when the digest come up and we'll decide what we have to do. But, you know, hopefully that the numbers will be good and that even the stuff that's, that's necessary can remain. But, you know, that's something that, that we may have to look at. I know that we don't want to put no more burden on the taxpayers than we have to because of the goodness of their hearts to allow us to have T-Splotch and Splotch. So we just need to be, you know, conscious of that. And, but again, I was, I appreciate the work for the committee, the ones that came to the, to the meetings that I wasn't able to attend. And, you know, we, you know, when you look at that was not approved and what was approved, the numbers are almost equal, you know, but, you know, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. All right. Anyone in the audience have anything to say? As they said, no pressure, no pressure, but this is just a public hearing, so it's open.
I have to say this while Melissa's here. Once again, she and I are sort of on the Development Authority. And when you look at these kind of, these times, budgetary sessions, whether it be the city of Heinzville or Liberty County, whomever is doing it, that's why it's vitally important that we diversify economic community. So we have some other sources of, and good paying jobs coming to our county. What they teach you is that residential, let's say, commercial and industrial, very, very minimal service. But when you have a whole lot of rooftops, they require a lot of service. So we need to steadily promote industrial. I know some folk don't have the best feel for it, but it's what we need to do to diversify economy. I'm proud of how we've done it. We've been very strategic in that we've positioned it so it's not been detrimental to a lot of residential neighborhoods. And to a county commissioners, a challenge for us, not right now because it's going to take a few years for some of those places to develop, but they'll start, starting to start at an average of $19 an hour, am I right?
Yes.
So, so county, you need to keep your salary competitive.
It's going to be competition.
Yeah.
They're going to go down there if we can't, if we can't keep up with it.
I'm pleased where we are now. We just got to keep trucking. I agree with Commissioner Walden down there looking at our, keep looking at our fund balance and of course pray for the digest to bring us through and keep promoting our community for more commercial and industrial to help our community out. You got to have that.
Absolutely.
And I agree with Commissioner, who said about Splotch and T-Splotch?
Yeah.
All those have come to our rescue as well as ARPA. Now, we do know that ARPA is not guaranteed for the second round, am I right? Has something changed with that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We tried to be good stewards of the first part, not guaranteed. And we have told some of those people who are being paid by ARPA that, you know, it's ARPA funded, so if ARPA goes away, then there has to be some reconfiguring.
Yes.
When it comes to that. So they've been put on notice, but it's been a blessing while we have it, so we appreciate that. So we'll see, we'll, we'll see.
You know, another thing, Mr. Chairman, the, the part of the county residents that's, that get these, not amendments, what word am I looking for on the taxes?
Exemptions.
Exemptions, yeah. I mean, you know, that's, that's a good bit. I mean, you know, you just, all you have to do is just ride through town and look at that decal. I mean, it's like every, I counted today, every fifth car had it.
Oh, wow.
I don't, I don't know how much that takes off, but it doesn't, it's a negative.
It's a negative for us.
Yeah, so, and, but, but, you know, we have to do that as well.
Yes, we do.
Did you count mine?
Yeah, well, I was riding behind you. I blew the horn at you, you kept on going.
That's what I deserve it.
Samantha, this is your first video on one of these and you, you did do a good job.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Everybody, today, it's cool in here and we, of course, we've recognized a long time county commissioner and everybody, you know, they feel good about themselves and... you know, they feel good about themselves, and the public, but things is, you know, the water does get deep, so, just.
Keep a life jacket on? You tell her to keep a life jacket on?
I'm just, to let you know, I mean, you know, it just comes with the territory.
Yes.
So, just, just hang in there, we'll hang in there with you, alright?
Appreciate it, yes, sir.
What I like about the presentation is how she made those slides come in.
Man, it's cool, Slade.
Got a little excitement.
How, how much did that cost, Commissioner?
Oh, no, we got talked to IT, that was the best presentation.
Yeah, that was good.
Lift up your game. She did great.
Before we close the public hearing, just want to make sure there's not any public comments, everybody's good?
Come on, Melissa.
We hope she, she was clear with the presentation. Well, good, good, alright. At this time, Chair, time to move to close the public hearing, go back in the record session?
So move.
Second, all in favor, show of hands, alright, back in the record session. Now, thank you, Mr. Samantha.
Thank you.
Good job, good. Alright, speaking of economic development and community development, all those kind of things, Ms. Park, come talk about it. Let's see, are we doing some, no, oh, we've got a rezoning coming up. First is a variance, Commissioner Jones, once again, said he could not be here, I think a few of this may be in his district, so I, I asked him, I'll try to get a feel from him, did you hear back from him?
I'll hear back, probably not sure.
What his stance was on these, so we're going to have to stand in the gap for him today.
I got it.
Ready.
I remember those days.
Go back in the public hearing too, for rezoning.
Alright, Chair, time to move to go back in the public hearing.
So move, Chair.
Second, all in favor?
Well, my slides are probably kind of basic.
You don't, they're not dancing and twirling?
Yeah, no, sir. Anyway, the first variance request I have is 2023-029LC. A variance request was submitted by Russell Brown to reduce the side yard setback to two feet, opposed to fifteen feet required in an R1 zoning district for an addition to an existing home. The property is located at 47 Japonica Drive, the map and parcel is 339D009. Of course, this is just the publications, the legal ad and the variance sign we had to post on the property. Just the vicinity map, you come off of Island Highway on the Kings and into Japonica, and it's like the second or third lot there off of Japonica. The zoning map just consists of all R1 zoning in this area. And the narrative from the applicant, it's, they have a twenty by, a twenty-two by twenty existing cabin on the property already, and they would like to enclose the existing screen porch, excuse me, deck that's on there for a screen porch, and add a ten-foot addition to the actual cabin, and then they want to add a little four-by-six porch onto that. The building is two feet off of the property line now, so actually they'd be asking for a thirteen-foot setback. And, come back, yeah, the property is ten foot along the current building wall, adjacent to the property line. And I did get a, and you'll see in a few slides, I did get an email from the adjacent property owner that would be closest to this side, and he had no objections whatsoever for the variance. And here, this will be better, this is the side of the, the property that's closest to it. And what they're wanting to do, this side faces Japonica, and this is near the water side. Here, they just want to go along and put the ten-foot addition here and close in the screen porch. And, of course, the, the building was built according to the property record card around 1990, so it's just an existing, when it was built, it was already the two foot close to the side here, through the property line, right here. And they're not going any more over, they just want to come out right here and put the little ten-foot addition for extra bedroom. And this is just the sketch plan that we have, which will show exactly what I was saying, this part. Here is what would face Japonica, this is just the addition with a deck, so they would have a, a door here, and just screen in the existing porch here. And there, I'll go over the conditions for granting the variance. No, there would not be any extraordinary or exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question because of its size, shape, or topography. The application of the appendix to this particular piece of property would create an unnecessary hardship. Yes, the existing house is, was built there two feet from the property line. Such conditions are peculiar to the particular piece of property, no, and if relief was granted, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good, impair the purpose or intent of the ordinance, however, there is no variance may be granted for the use, the land or building or structure that is prohibited by the appendix. And the LCPC staff recommended approval, and I did get a call from Mr. Brown, the applicant, around 3:34 o'clock, and he really apologized. He lives in Savannah, and this is just sort of his coast house, and he had something going on with a family member, and he was not able to come. So, that's pretty basic.
You have a statement you said from the Jason Propofell, who was in support of?
Yes, sir, I do, I have a copy of the email, he sent the email to me.
Okay, did, did you have any, any nays?
No, sir, I haven't had one call.
Alright, okay. Any questions for Ms. Parks about this, I think it's pretty clear. Chair, time to motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, I was going to make it, it was in my district, but go ahead.
It was your district, I thought it was said.
I'm sorry, I thought it was one of his. You make the motion, he'll do the second.
Chair, make a motion that we approve the variance.
We'll take, Commissioner Gillett's motion as a second. All in favor, show of hands, please.
Want to be careful.
Yes, sir. So Arcadia is in this report, right?
Trent, likely.
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
You too?
District.
And we're supposed to get, Ms. Mosley, y'all working those maps for us?
District one, two.
Those district maps.
I'm here.
What, were you, um?
Put down what district it was in.
Let's go back to that. At one time, we were noting which district it is.
We were doing that.
I thought, that was a request we made from Trent, I don't think we made that request for them.
They used to do it, though, I think they did it once.
I have it, well, it's been, but, yes, sir, just put, we will, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for?
Ready.
Okay, the next one I have for you is a conditional use request, 2023-032LC. A conditional use request was submitted by Arcadia Excavating LLC to create a pond through a small surface mine, a bar pit, which would be about fifteen acres. Property is located off of Leroy Cofer Highway, and the map and parcel is 139036. In the public notifications, the sign and the legal ads were put out. This is the vicinity map, it's located off of Leroy Cofer Highway, it's next to, Arcadia subdivision would be right here, and this, of course, is Leroy Cofer. The entire acreage of this property that's in the red is about a hundred and six acres. And there's an existing dirt road, you can, you can see it on another slide a little bit better, but this existing dirt road right here would be access to how they would get to that property. This is just a zoning map showing that the property is zoned A1, there is some R2 and some, the dark yellow is the R2, and the lighter color is some R1 in the zoning. Flood map, it is in an A-zone. Flood map, you can see this part, of course, in the blue is the flood. And again, there is shaded area with the hatch lines, of course, is some wetlands, it's all on the top, top part. The narrative is, Ms. Ray is in the process of creating a pond, the creation of the pond will be created through a, a small surface mine bar pit. The surface mine bar pit will be permitted through the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Once completed, this water feature would become an access to the property. And again, as I said, the access to the surface mine will be through a driveway off of Leroy Cofer, and they will have to, if it's approved or whatever, when they get to the final stages, they will need to get an LDA permit through the county building department as well. And this is actually the location of the bar pit, and it's about fifteen acres, so it's above that dirt road that comes in through off of Leroy Cofer. And, excuse me, this plan, the only way we could get it on there was to sort of put it in sideways, but this is, again, Leroy Cofer here, this just shows the wetlands, it's sort of the, the layout, the survey. This is actually the bar pit, the dirt road, and the existing property around it. And the next slide is the LCPC did recommend approval for the conditional use for the bar pit.
Is the petitioner here? Hello there.
Yes. And Trent's here to answer any questions to, if you have any, I can go back to the.
Trent, are you taking it easy?
I am.
I hope that you are.
Actually, my wife is keeping me still. It's not working very well. Because I feel much better.
Glad to hear that.
I don't know what y'all need.
Yes, sir, so, um, this little surface mine will be kind of to the north of the little access road that goes back and forth and serves a neighbor, and it's about the same size as the Pittman pit that you looked at a couple of months ago, this one's about three acres bigger. Not much, but roughly the same size. All the traffic comes in and out off of 17, it doesn't go through Arcadia subdivision. And of course, the state is the one that permits all these surface mines, and one of the criteria is that it is correctly zoned. So, that's one reason that they're here today, to get you guys to approve the zoning for this. Now, you talked about earlier, seeing a lot of bar pits and surface mines popping up all over the place. With the development of all the warehouses everywhere, there's a tremendous need for dirt right now, and so, you know, that need is kind of, this is how you're going to answer the need. This doesn't cover everything, but it gets a lot.
Yeah, yeah, alright, alright, thank you. Any questions for?
Trent, Mr. Long. Just to clarify, when someone wants to do one, a surface mine or whatever, what's the process from the beginning? Take, take, take me all the way through it.
Okay, so, um, the state has a laundry list of items that you've got to take care of. So, first of all, we look at the property and make sure that the soil is suitable for excavation and being able to use somewhere. Quite honestly, there are some soil types that are not the best soil types, that you wouldn't want to do, waste your time for a surface mine. This case, you've got some ridge of sand here that will be good. So, first thing you do is you look at, you start going through that checklist of things that this state has. One, make sure you have a, a good boundary survey. Two, make sure that you've checked all the environmentally sensitive areas like the wetlands. You'll see, we kind of, you know, for the rezoning part, we make sure that we have estimated the wetlands before it goes to the state. We get a field verified wetland that gets approved by the Corps. That goes to the state. Usually, we use some sort of topo like LiDAR, or, and we don't have to have super good topo, just some topo so you know what the layer of the land is, how the water's going to react. When you're designing these things, you set it up to go to different depths, depending on how deep you think you can get, and what your ability to dig that deep is. You also have to create, when you're building these things, you have to drain it, and you have to pump it to get the water out of it, so you have to have settling basins, and you have to get what they call an industrial NPDES permit. Like, we have a stormwater NPDES permit for the county, and when we do construction projects, we get a construction NPDES project, uh, permit. They go through and they get an industrial permit for the construction of a surface mine. But all that takes place after zoning and as you're going through getting your permit from APD. So, once you get your design, it gets all approved, you know, we, we have to show slopes of the bank, and basically, you try to keep a good slope. The, the requirement is a three-to-one side slope, slope to a depth of six feet of the normal water surface elevation. So, you figure out what that normal water surface elevation is, and you try to make sure you're on a three-to-one side slope till you get there. Now, with our sands, about the best we can do most of the time is one-to-one, two-to-one side slope, and once we get beyond six foot depth, you can go a little bit steeper on the side slopes. But, you know, if somebody's swimming, you know, by the time they're six feet in water, they're already swimming, so having the bottom go a little deeper, it doesn't really change the situation. But you, you jump through a whole bunch of hoops with the road control, make sure that your water's clean as it leave, it leaves. You've got to do sampling of your discharge quarterly. And just, there's a laundry list, I, I'm sure I've forgotten some of them, but, you know, there's a lot of things that you do, and you have to report to the state annually how much dirt you took out of it.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know, that was about as brief of dissertation on surface mines as I can.
You said when you started off, no?
There's a lot, there's a lot more to it than just me inside.
Okay, alright, okay, alright.
Alright, any other questions?
So, we need to, well, make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chair, to approve this conditional request?
That's your motion? This is a second?
Second.
Second.
We approve the divisional question presented, our friends from LCPC, Mr. Long, Ms. Park, Ms. Ray, excuse me. Any further discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, please. Alright.
Okay, the next petition I have for you is a rezoning petition, 2023-033. A rezoning petition was submitted by James B. Ray to rezone 245.93 acres, more or less, from R1 to AR1 for agricultural and single-family use. The property is located off of Leroy Cofer Highway, and the map and parcel is the 139034. And this is the public notifications we have to be, have to put out. And this is the vicinity map, and you can see it actually abuts to the piece of property that we just discussed, which was here. But this property in red is the entire 245-plus acres. The zoning map, of course, shows that this is R1, the light colored is the R1. And it's in the same, it is in a flood zone A. Again, the light blue area is considered the flood. It's the same, as you can tell, there is some wetlands on this piece, and it's the same up here, closer to Leroy Cofer, and way down in the rear of the property is the wetlands. The narrative from the applicant is, the subject property, 139034, is located off of Leroy Cofer Highway. The property is currently zoned R1, single-family residential, and the proposed use is for agricultural residential. Again, this is the plan, all of the property that's in the blue is the 245 acres. And it's also going to be accessed from the same dirt road off of Leroy Cofer. The zoning analysis, will there be any adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? No. Is the property proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide. Excuse me. Does the property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? Yes. Does the proposed use conform with the J-LAS study? Yes, it does. Does the proposed use conform with the Liberty County Comp Plan? Yes, it does. The Comp Plan identifies this property as agricultural forestry? No, there would not be any adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby property? No, there would not be any adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties. Yes, the proposed use is suitable for, in view of nearby uses. There would not be any, it would not create an undue burden on transportation, streets, transit, schools, utilities, or the provision of public safety. This would not allow a short-term gain at the expense of the local long-term goals. It would not create a domino effect or encourage sprawl. And there were no historical sites noted that would be adversely impacted. Is the property in a flood zone? Yes, it is, it's in the flood zone A. It is not considered spot zoning, and there are no unique conditions which support approval or denial. And the LCPC recommendation was approval for the rezoning.
Anything you want to add, sir?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we rezon, follow the recommendation of LCPC.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the recommendations presented for petition twenty-two-three zero three-three. Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands, please. Close, alright, rezoning is approved. Am I still in public here, Mr. Brown? Twenty-two-three oh three-four.
Okay, now this is a conditional use request, two zero two three oh thirty-four. A conditional use request was submitted by James B. Ray to create a pond through a surface mine bar pit. It's around about nine acres, the property is located off of Leroy Cofer Highway, the map and parcel is one thirty-nine oh thirty-four. This is the public notifications that we have to put out. There's the vicinity map, just like I talked about in the rezoning. The vicinity, the zoning map, again, just shows it being R1. Same flood maps. Exact wetlands. And the narrative is Mr. Ray is in the process of creating a pond. The creation of the pond will be created through a small surface mine bar pit. The surface mine bar pit will be permitted through the, permitted through the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Once completed, this water feature will become an access asset to the property. And it's also will be, the entrance will be off of Leroy Cofer Highway. And again, too, will need the LDA permit through the county building department. Now, this is the location of this bar pit. The blue area here. And again, this shows just the existing road coming in, this is Leroy Cofer, and the bar pit would be down in this area.
It's that same dirt road we talked about earlier?
Same dirt road.
Mm-hmm. And the one we did talk about earlier for Arcadia excavating is sort of right here, on, up on this side.
Go back to that drawing, let, go back to.
To go back, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, I have one here, Mr. Stevens, it's better if you need to.
No, I wanted to look at something up there. Where was the other bar pit at?
Well.
There?
Yes, sir, mm-hmm.
So both of them will be, can almost be joined together if they.
Right, the other one will be located right on this side of the dirt road. And then this one down here, am I right, Trent?
Melissa's, that's in this area.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is what we're talking about now, the one we just did, it's right here.
Yeah, right in there.
Alright, okay. Alright.
Alright.
Mr. Stevens. I believe he must be going to dig dirt out of one hole and put it in somebody else's hole. Kind of like Cool Hand Luke when he digging a hole, what's he putting his dirt in boss's ditch?
Ready, Mr. Chair?
Hey, we have a family of bees who going to have plenty of dirt.
Make sure you got a couple of holes.
Chair, I make a motion that we allow this to go forth as a surface mine pit.
Second. Motion second, we approve the presentation twenty-two-three oh three-four. Any further discussion? If you're not all in favor, show your hands, please.
So this is all out?
So there are no neighbors, right?
No, sir, we didn't have anyone.
This is all there, sir.
No more than Bambi.
Shouldn't be anybody back there, okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Laurie.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah.
General Public hearing.
Can I ask a question on the last presentation? The, you're doing nine acres bar pit. Any tentative plans for the rest of the property or not yet?
I bought it for generational. My man will leave it, my kids, their kids.
So whether they do with it.
What he bought it for.
Okay.
It's been definitely bad for thirty-plus years, thirty.
Really? Yeah.
Dirt trees come all the way from the pond and, like y'all, we need dirt trees, so.
It's curious. Thank you all. Alright, new business, speed zone cameras. Chair, motion to come out of public.
Second.
Second, all in favor, show your hands. Now, speed zone cameras, there's been some discussion about those in, in Liberty County. Commissions have some questions, like some concerns, so we don't allow them to express them. At this time, there's been some emails, you know, our county attorney has chimed in. And he asked that if there are any further questions, please direct them to him, he'll be here at the next meeting, if the good Lord willing. And I think that's the extent of where we are right now, so we're opening up now to the commissions for their.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'll get started on it. I know, I sent the, I was asked by a citizen about the cameras and I, you know, I didn't know more about it than, than what he was telling me, but I, I told him that I'll see what I can find out. So I sent a text message, I think, to Sheriff Bowman, Mr. Brown, and Chairman Lovett on the twenty-first, and didn't get a reply, so I followed up with a meeting, a call with Joey and a call to you, Mr. Chairman, as well. And, you know, and, you know, just trying to find a little bit more information so that I could respond to the guy that had questioned me about it. And it seemed to kind of take up, take on a life of its own after that. As Mr. Chairman said, we've, it picked up a little steam in the last week. And there's been some, some email correspondence about it. I think the last one was kind of interesting from, from the attorney that said that, you know, if, that we can make a decision on how we want to run this program going forward. I guess, you know, Kelly is not here right now, but that was in his email today. But it did raise some questions and I talked to several people throughout the last couple of weeks. And, you know, there were some, some comments made and people didn't really know much about it. And, and I know the sheriff office, the sheriff is a constitutional officer and, you know, he has things that he could do that's regulated by the state and, you know, we, we all fully understand that. But some of the things that was, that was mentioned to me is that people thought that maybe, in the interest of transparency, that maybe there should have been a message board put there, that, you know, speed detection vise coming soon. I know y'all probably seen those, like, traffic light coming soon. And, you know, they'll run that message board for maybe a month and then they'll activate the light. And then there were some questions about the, you know, who manages the funds that come from these cameras? And I think that's something that, that attorney discussed in the, in the email and that's something that we can decide how we're going to do that going forward. But again, in the interest of transparency, it probably would have been best, and this is hindsight, had we notified the public either through a meeting here, through Facebook, or through the newspaper. And, and then advertise it for a while and then maybe, you know, then go forward with it. Again, in the interest of transparency, that's, and that's hindsight, so. But I think Major Kirkendall answered some questions in his email, in his memo, and our attorney made some comments in his email, I think, came out today. So, you know, I don't, I don't know where we are going forward. But hopefully, we can get a better hold of this and, and move forward with it.
Thanks, sir. Alright, attorney said he's going to be here at next meeting and he'll, we can go further in depth. And you're right, there has to be a discussion about the handling of funds, so we'll put all that on the table under the guidance of our attorney. For transparency, thank you, sir. Agreement of municipal election for the city of Waltaville? I'm sorry, GIS contract, Clint.
We can't forget Clint.
Yeah.
Got some slides? No.
That dance? In other words, it's going to take him longer to get to the mic than it is for him to speak. Absolutely. I like his presentation already, absolutely.
Good evening, I'm here again, it's that time of the year to renew our GIS contract with Coastal Regional Commission. The contract will begin July first for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Contract is for a total of fifty thousand dollars. What this is, is that the CRC provides GIS services to the county. Right now, our GIS, we don't have a GIS technician, or technician that we did have found another job. So when we don't have a technician actually in-house, they backfill and do all the work for us. And then once we put out the ad for the position, they help me interview and, and find somebody to hire and then they train that person to take over the contract from them. And if we can get somebody to stay, then that contract eventually will go away. But the same price as it was last year, no increase. And it's by the hours that they actually do the work, up to a total of fifty thousand dollars for the year. And it is budgeted.
Is that, is that reasonable or is that close to us having one in-house?
About the same, yeah.
This is the one that does the maps, too?
They do the maps, all of our addressing, they update the 911 addressing system, create all the districts, fire zones, do all the stuff with CAD for the fire department, EMS, everything.
How long has this been vacant?
Four, five months.
Couple of months.
Five months, yeah. Five months. This is not an easy position to fill. It's a struggle all over the state. Heinzville, I think, had a vacancy for over a year and they just hired somebody from, actually from California.
California?
Yeah, the guy we had came from Ohio.
Interesting.
Yep. And it is something that we put out nationally.
He didn't come for it well, he came because it's cheaper.
I said in a nutshell, what do you, what do you want to do?
I want y'all to approve the contract tonight.
So they can help them to find someone.
Yeah, all you want to do is advertise?
No, I want you to, no, this is a contract, this has nothing to do with that. This is, they're providing the service for us until we get the person in-house. The position's already out for ad, for advertisement. This is just the contract with the Coastal Regional Commission.
I, I just have one quick question so we can expedite this. But, so it's for fifty thousand, for technically for what, twelve months?
Yes, sir.
Is that annual? So if we find someone in between those times, it'll be prorated?
No, no, they're, so basically, once the person comes in over the, over the year, they're going to train that person, too. And they still provide services such as doing the 911 addressing, they store our data. It's, it's a big contract, they do a lot for the fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
There's a lot to it.
So this person just doesn't walk in knowing how to do the job they have to have?
They walk in knowing what they're supposed to do, they tell them exactly how we do it here. And they got to, they got to become familiar with the county, the addresses, where these roads are, where the districts are, all that stuff, yeah.
Are we advertising that position currently?
It's being advertised locally on Indeed. The software company that provides the GIS software has actually posted it nationally and, and I've shared.
And no one wants to come to Liberty County?
And it's not just here, it's, it's all over the state.
All over here. So what would, what would their, what would they major in to do this job?
It could be GIS, GIS mapping. Yeah, it's all kind of different things, there's not, they usually major, well, they usually major in something different.
Can't it be general studies?
No, and they are required, they are required to have a degree.
I apologize. Just wanted to help him out.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question here. You got your calculator, Joe? If you had to do it for a year, fifty thousand a month for twelve months?
No, 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 no. Fifty thousand total.
Not, not to exceed fifty thousand.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
The GIS services anyway, so if they don't have new maps or producing the rest of the week.
I'm sorry, no.
We, we know that's in your budget.
Yes, sir, it's in the budget, this is the fifth year that we renewed this contract, it's, it's an ongoing thing. It's just a formality.
It's in your budget and it's just fifty thousand dollars, that's.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
It could be lower.
Yeah, it's budgeted, it's in the budget.
It might for it to be thirty, but I mean.
Chair, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the.
Motion second, approve the GIS contract as presented by Mr. Fish. He needs some help in that department. Any further discussion?
All I want to say is as long as we, you know, work as hard as we can to get it filled and.
We're trying.
We don't go over that money, man.
We're trying.
All, all in favor, show your hands, please. You can go ahead, you go.
I was just having a statement. It's fine. Appreciate it, Clint.
Election for the city of Waltaville.
Yes, sir, thank you, mentioned, there were a couple others coming to you, this is another one to conduct the municipal election for the city of Waltaville. Standard election contract, a hundred percent reimbursable by the city.
I think that's clear enough, a hundred percent reimbursement by the city of Waltaville.
Yes, sir.
Chair, take a motion.
I make a motion if it's a hundred percent.
Second.
Second.
Approve the contract to conduct the election for the city of Waltaville, a hundred percent reimbursable. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you, so motion passed. Board appointments for citizens authority, aging services, and.
You got another one there, Joe?
Just the board appointment stuff, it's, so Ms. Camper had actually sent the email last time, I think that's where the confusion might have been. And it was actually for Mr. James Thomas's.
But that, but that wasn't.
That was not our fault.
That wasn't our fault, correct?
I could easily see a misread there.
You did hear that, though, right?
Blaming you.
So, Mr. Chair.
I don't know anybody that's blaming.
Chair, the, the board, it makes it official that we reappoint Mr. Jim Thomas.
To the little authority?
Is that right, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I'd be correct.
That's a motion, second.
Second, that we reappoint Mr. Jim Thomas for that position. Any further discussion, we realize there was error in communication, but it's clear now. All in favor, show your hands, please, Mr. Jim Thomas be appointed, reappointed, alright. Aging Services Advisory.
So at the last meeting, the board made a recommendation to appoint Ms. Valdez to that. I don't, I normally wouldn't talk about age especially in the media, but she is not of age to be able to be on there, which is good news, so, but she has indicated a willingness to serve on the DBHDD board, of which we've had no bun that has applied for. So I think the recommendation is probably to allow her to fill that if the committee so desires.
Committee?
Is that your motion, Joe?
You can't make the motion.
Yes, we make the motion to appoint Ms. Valdez to the.
Aging Services.
Aging Services.
It'll be to the DBHDD. Not to the DBHDD, should be okay.
Well, wait a minute, because she was appointed first to the.
To the aging, but she, she didn't qualify to be on that board, yes.
So we don't have to rescind it.
We don't have to rescind that.
Motion second, we have Ms. Valdez to the DBHDD.
Right. Right.
Any further discussion? Everybody clear now? All in favor, show your hands, please. She was too young to take the other one, but she was. Hey, I'm just a capoeira over here, man. I'm just thinking.
While we at this, Mr. Brown, would you check to verify on the facility authority? Just, do you have to be a resident of the county?
I will double-check those bylaws for you.
And I think we need to go back, while it's fresh on my mind, and I know we talked about the 911 advisory, we need to go back and verify exactly what we've done with that to make sure.
Okay. And then you, that still will leave you a vacancy with no applicants if, if you could be thinking about the Aging Services Council, correct?
DB, yeah.
So what's, what's the, what's the starting sixty? But, and, and that's what I'm saying, that's not just with us, that's a regional requirement?
It is, it is. It's a regional requirement. It's a state, state board.
I think sometimes some things do need to be reevaluated and looked into, 'cause if someone's in their 40s, but they're in that profession where they're, they're educated, you know, and they're practicing helping out elderly, why wouldn't they be qualified? What, what makes someone that's just 60 be qualified if they're just 60? I would rather have someone that's, that has the education to be able to, to bring something more to the table than just an aging department.
Is that for the aging board?
It is.
You might not, you might not feel that way when you get 60.
I mean, that's like 20 years for me.
All right, furniture bids, Miller Park Fire Station.
Among us, I would hate to see us spend money to advertise again, y'all, for the Aging Services position. Do we want to canvass the community?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
The community, see can we find someone who's willing to serve on the aging?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
If, if the only requirement would be being 60.
Mr. Stevens is the oldest one in here, and he could be, he'd be a good appointment.
No problem, I can handle it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, really and truly, I, I understand, Commissioner Fraser, what you said. Sometimes people can get elected at an age and still make the appointment, you know, and they're saying, why do I have to appoint somebody 60 years old? I, I ran, and I'm 20 years old. But, I mean, I'm, I'm over 60, but I'm really and truly.
And, and the thing is, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against that. I, it's, what I'm saying is that the only requirement to be on the board. You just have to be 60?
I think your feelings change when you get 60.
I think you have to be a Liberty County resident.
So.
You want all us, Mr. Chairman, and you don't want anybody to try to find anybody?
Yes, sir. Let's try and find someone for that.
You know, sometimes people will. Looks like I'm outnumbered up here. They'll talk about. This is the time, we need someone to volunteer. All right, furniture bids, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we sent our proposal out in late April, requesting proposals to provide us some bids for Miller Park Fire Station. We held a, a pre-proposal meeting via Zoom on Friday, May the 5th. Twenty vendors attended. We only had seven people to submit proposals, two of them which were submitted incorrectly and thus were thrown out. The Furniture Proposal Review Committee reviewed the remaining five, and another one was, didn't meet the criteria. In the end, as we reviewed those four very carefully and scrutinized them, they did not meet what we had as the anticipated budget, and so thus we're recommending to the Board of Commissioners to reject all the bids and allow us to go back out.
How far would that put us behind with our completion date?
As I understand it, Commissioner, the, I think the fire station, Mr. Brown, is, we're talking about late August, early, early September.
The final review, the review committee discovered that none of the remaining four met the county's anticipated budget. Go ahead and clarify.
They weigh over budget.
They were each consistently way over budget, those four?
So the, the other thing in that model is we had proposed them by room of various types of furniture, wasn't just office furniture, it was bedroom furniture, it was recliners. So there were some that couldn't even quote on some of the items in there. What we've actually done is solicited some services from an interior designer who's agreed to help us out at Savannah to, to catalog those, if you will, to, to get us a better price holistically by the way we model that and send it out. And so, yes, sir, even if you totaled the cheapest of every, it exceeded our budget by, by about 50%.
Because they're, they're putting theirs, what, so do we have to bid this out, or can we do this internally?
No, sir, you have to bid it out. Because the threshold is $100,000, and the anticipated cost is over $100,000 for it.
Lot of furniture.
All right.
Joey, can we get a few pieces? I mean.
You know, what we.
Beds and chairs.
Yeah, what we'll end up doing, of course beds weren't in there, but what we'll end up doing in discussion with the interior designer is we'll end up pulling out, like the recliners and some things like that that are special made for that type of use. You don't want a residential recliner in there and some of those things. But I think there's six items that we'll pull out, won't substantially change the overall total, but they're just specialty items in that. But even, even the threshold will still be over $100,000, we think, for that. And that money is vested in the bond payment.
One more question. So since it's over $100,000, do it, that should be into the NWB policy, correct? It should meet that, right?
It, it's a bid, so it wouldn't be the.
But, but once they pick it up, they still should have at least a, a effort for the participation. And, and while we're speaking of that, Mr. Chair, can we please bring that back? If we could have her, 'cause, I mean, we haven't looked at the NWB policy in. I think we made a note the other day, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
I think she's trying to get it over.
We'll bring it back in. But, yeah, I'm trying to remember the.
So.
It was $100,000. Anything over $100,000 from my, what I remember.
I think it was for construction projects. I'm not sure it was a dollar threshold. I think it was for.
I think it was on construction.
It was construction projects.
Well, if that's the case, then we need to relook, look at it. We'll clarify that, too. Because I.
Check and see.
It should be across the board. We'll have her come back.
Yeah, and I, I think it would be good to get a good understanding of that, of how that's applied.
All right, well, I hate to see, I'm like Commissioner Walton, we'll see us lose any time, but. Do it again. Thank you, sir.
You need a motion?
Do we need to?
The motion, yes, sir.
We need a vote to reject, a motion to, to reject the.
Chair, I make that motion to reject.
Second. Second. All in favor, show your hands.
Joe, who you have working on this? I know Joe's facilitating, getting it on there, but I mean, we have a fire station in Jupe in August, and they can't be in it because we don't have, I mean, we ought to be able to get something for them to be in, and if we have to change it out later on, I just hate to see them.
Well, they're not, they're not. If they're, if they go in there in August, they'll, they'll be lucky. It'll, it'll be September, October before they get in there, and so we've made sure that these are gonna go back out before that. We'll have them plenty of time. The goods will be delivered in plenty of time for them to be in there.
Announcements, sir?
Just a couple. The Walt at Dorchester, of course, many of y'all know about that already.
You checked.
That's coming up on the 17th, June 17th, of 23. And just a reminder that Ms. Tark sent out today the registration for the countywide planning[1734.91]